I hereby call the Des Moines City Regular Council Meeting to order for September 28th, and I'm going to have Deputy Mayor Buckston lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Hi. The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Deputy Mayor Buckston. Councilmember Steinmetz is out of the country, and I'm looking for a motion to excuse. I have that from Councilmember Nutting, seconded by Councilmember Pennington. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Passes unanimously, thank you. Before we start the meeting, really quick, I'm going to take a quick moment, and I would like Will and Gracie to come forward. We don't usually get young people attending the meeting, and I wanted to recognize their presence.
No, Mayor.
Okay, it's now time for comments from the public and written public comments. I would just like to remind those participants that any person making personal impertinent or slanderous remarks, or become boisterous, threatening, or personally abusive while addressing the council will be removed from the meeting. You all have three minutes to speak, and we have the sheet here. The first person is a former councilmember, Rob Back. You have the floor for three minutes, sir.
Thank you. You guys know who I am. For the record, and for those who don't know me, Rob Back, I've been a resident of the city of Des Moines for going on 44 years now. I'm a business owner, a property owner, and I love our city. As you guys know, I served on the council from January 2016 until 2020, just two months before COVID. So it turns out that was a great time for me to take a break, and I want to compliment the way you guys that were part of the council right when COVID hit, the way you navigated through all that. I can't imagine what that was like. So tonight, I'm speaking as an advocate for the Genesis Project. In a few minutes, you're going to be hearing from Andy Connor, King County Sheriff's Deputy, who is the founder of the Genesis Project. It began in 2011. Andy, I'll share just a brief part of your story, but as a deputy working the streets in Sea-Tac, he was getting tired of arresting some of the same girls over and over for prostitution, and started to hear some of their stories that they did not want to be in that kind of life. And so he was looking for programs and ways to help, and there wasn't anything, so he became a part of the solution. Genesis Project speaks as an advocate for those that are caught in human trafficking. This is a nonprofit organization dedicated to helping survivors of commercial and sexual exploitation. So I'm speaking tonight because you guys are in the budget process. Obviously, in the next month or so, you're going to be hearing from parks and police and Public Works, and everybody's got their hand out. Fortunately, our city's finances are in better condition now than they were many years ago, so there is some discretionary money that you're able to give away, and I'm happy to hear that our human services funding is going to give a little allocation to the Genesis Project. So I want to encourage the city to give as much as you can. This is a worthwhile cause. Some of the stuff that Andy's going to share, it's not an easy topic. And there's some things that are worthwhile that are not easy, but I just need to remind the community that the Green River Killer was born and raised right here in Des Moines, and 95% of his victims came from either Sea-Tac or Des Moines. So any girl that is trying to escape prostitution, we need to stand unified and help such an organization as this. So I would encourage the council during this budget process to allocate as much as possible as you can through your human services funding to help the Genesis Project, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Back. Moving on to the Score Jail Chaplains, Bob and Sheri Anderson. A-N-D-R-E-S?
Andreessen.
Andreessen, okay.
Spanish.
I wasn't sure if you misspelled your own name, man. Just giving you. All right, go ahead, sir. You have three minutes.
Good evening. Thank you very much for giving me the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Bob Andreessen, and I'm here tonight with my wife Sheri Andreessen. She can raise her hand right there. We are both longtime residents of Des Moines. I am currently the head chaplain at Score Correctional Facility, where my wife and I have served since its opening in 2011. As you all know, the city of Des Moines has been instrumental in the construction and oversight of the facility, which serves not only Des Moines, but many of our neighboring cities. I want to first just take a moment to thank you, the council, for your leadership in providing this state-of-the-art facility and the hiring of the outstanding staff that tirelessly works to keep our city safe and provide correctional strategies for the inmates during their incarceration. Thank you very much. My wife and I serve the SCORE staff with a total of five highly qualified volunteer chaplains that conduct non-denominational services for the inmates, respond to requests for spiritual guidance, and also help direct them to both faith-based and community-based resources when they are released from custody. I am here today to voice my support for one of those resources, the Genesis Project, which as informed by my friend Rob Back, would be speaking later in this meeting. I can confirm that there's a great need for the services they provide, especially due to the well-documented activities that exist along Pacific Highway South, and also the number of inmates that have reached out to us asking for help to escape from the lifestyle they have been trapped in. To illustrate my point this way, to write it out, let me share just one example that has been repeated many times in our ministry. At one of our services, God had touched several ladies in a miraculous way. During a time of prayer, several received physical healings as chronic pain left their bodies. Afterwards, a lady inmate approached me at the end of the service and said these words: "I've never seen anything like this, but this is what I want to know. Can this Jesus take away my addiction? And can He heal this?" As she pointed to her heart. I assured her that she could, but told her it would be up to her to begin taking the necessary steps to be free. After she met with the lady chaplains, they let me know that she was in an abusive relationship, and we arranged at her request to pick her up when she was released and get her to a safe place where she begin the process of recovery. Although we have several ministries, including Genesis Project that we partner with us, it has been and still is a challenge to find a place that has availability and provide the resources they need to overcome their hurts, habits, and hangups, especially for women. In this case, when we went to pick her up, we were still waiting calls back on where we could take her. However, it was not needed, because when she was released, she spotted her boyfriend in the parking lot, and fearing retaliation, she ended up returning with him to their motel room on Sea-Tac Strip. It broke me. We gave her a card with her phone number and told her to call if she ever changed her mind. To tell the rest of the story would take more than the time than I'm allowed, but just to let you say for now that one afternoon she did call. We have been in her life for the last six years, through many ups and downs, but with the help of many resources like the Genesis Projects, she has escaped her lifestyle and continues to have her life restored. As you will hear and see later tonight, the need is very great, and I believe with all my heart, the city of Des Moines, under your leadership, is in a position to provide solutions and resources to help the Genesis Project and others like them to accomplish the vision they have been given. Thank you again for your time, and may God bless all of you. Our prayers have been and will continue to be with each of you and your families.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. All right, moving on to Ms. Kathleen Suborin.
Close enough.
Oh, God, I'm just slaughtering names tonight.
Sabrin.
Sabrin?
Close enough.
So you don't pronounce the OU, then?
Right.
Okay, great.
My name is Kathleen, and I am a Des Moines resident. And I am also here to speak in favor of the city of Des Moines providing funding for the Genesis Project. Shortly after the Genesis Project opened in 2011, I attended their training and became a volunteer. Little did I know, when I became a volunteer, that my then-28-year-old daughter would be one of the first women the Genesis Project would help to escape prostitution. Part of the training was the ability to spot the signs that a woman was being promoted for prostitution. My daughter just got a new boyfriend she met in the parking lot of a convenience store. After knowing him for only three weeks, she and my then-two-year-old grandson got an apartment with this man. My daughter quit her job. The boyfriend was taking her across state lines. All these signs were extremely out of character for my daughter, and I knew something was not right. I went to the undercover agents who worked with the Genesis Project and advised them what was going on. They agreed that more than likely, she was being pimped, and they set up a sting. Not to arrest her and make her a criminal, but to give her an opportunity to escape the life and the boyfriend who was pimping her. This was no easy task for those undercover agents, because these women are schooled by their abusers on how to avoid being arrested. After three tries, they were successful, and that sting marked the beginning of my daughter's rescue with the Genesis Project beside her all the way. They provided emotional support, spiritual support, financial support when appropriate, and assisted her in finding housing where she could get away from her abuser, and they did much, much more. My daughter's exit out of the life and separation from the man who pimped her was grueling, and it took approximately five years. She is now 39 years old, is a very successful master esthetician who owns her own business. Andy and Laura Connor are still in contact with my daughter. I have no doubt that without the help and the support of the Genesis Project, my daughter's life would be very different right now. There is a possibility she would not even be alive. However, because of the Genesis Project, she became very vocal about her experience and has spoken at FBI training events in Seattle, was interviewed by David Rose for a news broadcast, interviewed on various podcasts, and has spoken several times at the Genesis Project's annual fundraising dinner. She is also now an advocate for other women who are trying to escape the life, and when invited, she visits and encourages the women at the Genesis Project. Now, directing my final comments to you, the city council, this was my daughter's story. What if it were your daughter or your granddaughter? Wouldn't you want the Genesis Project funded? Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Moving on to Ms. Sarah Tuttle. Oh, they're for the presentation, both her and Bobby? Okay. All right. All right, moving on to Mr. Andy Connor. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. And we allow the Genesis Project five minutes. I would ask not to be disrespectful, but we are trying to move the meeting, so if you hear the red beep, if you could just wrap up your thoughts, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Do we have a... Okay. I brought a slideshow. I can go through it pretty quick.
I'm sorry. They're here to do the city manager report, too. I think there was a misunderstanding about signing in. Okay, so you and Alyssa Vanderen?
She's with me, too.
Okay, okay, so you guys will be part of the presentation. All right. All right, moving on to Ms. Elizabeth Roberts.
Good evening. I'm here today to open a conversation about the speeding problem on South 222nd Street and implementing traffic slowing measures. My family lives on 222nd Street, and our children attend St. Philomena School, also on South 222nd. For those that don't know, this is a residential street with varying speed limits that serves as a cut-through from Pacific Highway to Marine View Drive. There are no traffic lights. There is one four-way stop at 24th and a two-way stop at 16th Avenue South. Traveling downhill west, vehicles pick up speed, and by the time they are crossing 16th Avenue South, they are traveling at an unsafe speed many times. According to the Des Moines Police blotter, there was an advanced life support accident on September 9th at 5:25 PM on 222nd at 16th, and there was a two-vehicle crash just a few days later on September 20th at 8:00 AM on the downhill westbound lane of 222nd, also at 16th Avenue South. I'd like to point out there is a radar speed sign or a driver feedback sign that gives a readout of your speed between 19th Avenue and 16th Avenue South. However, it is not a speed camera. At the point of the radar sign, the speed limit is 30 miles an hour. From my observations, from my house across the street from the sign, if a vehicle is traveling at more than 35 miles an hour, the radar does not register until the vehicle is only yards away. This means it has crossed the 19th Avenue intersection and passed the church steps. In other words, the car is going too fast to see the readout. I regularly see speeding on 222nd because I can see the radar sign, and I'm aware of how fast they are going. I regularly see speeds of over 40 miles an hour. Our children go to St. Philomena, and they are able to walk to school. Our oldest walks by himself, and I walk with our youngest. There is a crosswalk that we utilize daily, but crossing the street is perilous. Our presence stepping into the crosswalk has been ignored by passing vehicles. Vehicles fly east uphill, but especially west downhill during all hours, but notably during school hours, where signs posted call for 20 miles an hour during school hours. I understand there may not be widespread knowledge that there is a school there despite being open for 60 years. I do not feel that this is an excuse. Des Moines children go to St. Philomena. They are all our children. Other cities view their Catholic schools as worthy of traffic slowdowns. Mercer Island has speed humps along the streets of their Catholic school Sacred Heart. Our Lady of Guadalupe in West Seattle has a speed hump and a four-way stop, and an island that creates a tiny roundabout, and Holy Rosary in West Seattle also has a small island in the intersection. In conclusion, please consider making 222nd Street safe for the residents and students of St. Philomena School by implementing traffic slowing measures. Thank you.
Thank you. Just so you know, our police chiefs and our director of Public Works are here today, so I'm sure they've heard your thoughts, and we'll take appropriate action.
Thank you.
Thank you. And thanks for bringing Will and Gracie. All right. Moving on to committee chair reports, I'm going to start with Councilmember Nutting, who'll do the economic development, and then you can go right into the municipal facilities right after that.
Very good. Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, first off, in the Economic Development Committee meeting, we got an update on the fast ferry service. We're looking at navier boat hydrofoil, and it's a fully electric ferry that serves in our thoughts of multimodal transportation. When we did our pilot program, we transported 15,000 people, half of the residents of Des Moines, in two months, so it was very well-received. So looking into the electrification of the ferry service and partners, we are having... There's going to be a prototype and a show for the city and our consultants on Wednesday the 4th to take a look at this. And amazingly enough, our fare box revenue and the riders that were expected far exceeded what was predicted, 400% on ridership, 250% on revenues, two times what bus, what our transit system expects to get. We were at 40% for fare box revenue. So now, next steps are we've just got to identify partners with the program and figure out when and where we're going to get a boat, and the whole council will probably be briefed. Not next week, but I think our next council meeting's the 19th, so... That was both in the Economic Development Committee and in the Municipal Facilities Committee. Rolling into the Municipal Facilities Committee, we got an update on the Marina and Redondo paid parking. We had four bids, possible four vendors, two in-state and two out-of-state. The new technology is all cloud-based. One of the technologies that we're hoping to get is the LPR, license plate reader or license plate recognize, so you wouldn't have to keycard in and out. It would just recognize your license plate that you're paid a yearly service, and it would let you in. We're going to purchase both the Marina and the Redondo equipment at the same time, but the Redondo equipment, we don't have any infrastructure down there, so the Marina would be self-performing most of the work, the islands and the placement of the concrete and equipment, possibly hiring out some of the concrete cutting. And amazingly enough, that in the years of service that our paid parking was up and running, we made $800,000 off of it, so it does pay for itself, and we're waiting on next steps. It'll either come back to Municipal Facilities for a further update, or it will come back in a pending council meeting. And I believe that concludes my remarks, sir.
Thank you. I'll talk about Highline Forum. We were the host city yesterday at the police station. We gave a presentation of the city. A lot of our surrounding members that attended were impressed with the direction the city's is going. We got an update from the Seattle Airport on flights. They talked about in 2023, they were up 3.4%, but up 1.9% since 2019, and they expect about a 1% increase over the next four or five years as far as flights, increase in flights, which we know about, and we continue to work issues with that. The South King County Impact Fund, a lot of them, they'll do environmental grants, and then there's a group called Equity Diversity and Inclusion Staff, and what they do is they take the BIPOC community, especially those who are disadvantaged, they partner with them apprenticeships and then partner with businesses in the communities and airport-related jobs, and they've been able to place 528 jobs so far. So that was great news to hear. We got a start-up date, and with that, I'm going to turn it over to Councilmember Pennington about CERT training.
Thank you, Mayor. As some of you may recall, you heard Shannon Kirchberg, our director of Emergency Management Workplace Safety, talk about CERT. That's Community Emergency Response Teams. They've gotten a group of folks together from our community, and I believe Burean, to do a lot of training, and they've been training for a few months. And so what I'd like to point out is this Saturday, the 30th, between 11:00 and 2:00 o'clock, they'll be testing their skills up at a simulated disaster up at our Public Works and Park Service Center located at 24th and South 223rd Street. So there'll be, you know, several people there doing role-playing, they'll have some moulage, they'll be injured, they'll do their search and rescue skills, they'll be interacting with the police department and the fire department to talk about, you know, what they've found and what they've assessed. And so this kind of is the culmination of everything that they've learned over the last few months. You know, I'd just like to point out that it's, I think, always... I'm always grateful for folks in the community that will volunteer to leave their homes to go out and to, during a time of disaster and community need, to go out and do these things. And so I thank these folks. I've not met them. I'll meet them on Saturday, but I've not met a lot of them, but it takes a kind of a special person to be able to want to do that. And so I really appreciate that happening. If you want more information about CERT, if you want to become a CERT volunteer, you can go to the city website, City of Des Moines by website, Emergency Management, and it's ready.gov is the link that you click on. So if you have questions, get a hold of Shannon, she'll be more than happy to answer them. I believe this is open. If you want to swing by, there'll probably be an area that you can, if you want to observe, you can. So anyway, a big thank you to Shannon, all the different volunteers from the different agencies that came up and spoke and talked with these folks, and a big thank you again to them, and congratulations for finishing their program. It's not an easy program. They started out, I think, with 50, and they're down to 25. So it's not an easy program. There's a lot of stuff to it. So anyway, thank you, and that's it.
Thank you, Councilmember Pennington. All right. Before I turn the meeting over to the city manager to give his report, I want to make a quick comment. As your elected officials, our most important duties and responsibility is to safeguard the public trust and public resources. The city manager in this particular report will describe a critical element in honoring that trust, and with that, I turn it over to Michael.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. I want to just call up... So this, what we're discussing right now is we are issuing a bond for $25 million later in October, and so Standard and Poor's Global Rating Service provides an assessment of each agency issuing bonds, and in this case, it was Des Moines. And I just wanted to share with you their rating of the city. You can see that the long-term rating is AA+. Highest rating possible is AAA. That's well above most of our adjacent partners or cities. That's for the bond. Then the long-term rating of the city is once again AA+, which we currently hold, so they've affirmed our status. Let's go to the next slide. In describing the specifics of their rating view, what they stated was, "The rating reflects our view of the city's very strong economy with access to a broad and diverse metropolitan area, strong budgetary performance supported by a trend of generally positive operating results and the maintenance of very strong general fund reserves and liquidity, strong management with financial policies in practice. Practices we consider good that include realistic budget assumptions, budget-to-actual reports provided to the council quarterly, a five-year general fund forecast, a six-year capital improvement plan, updates on investment holdings and performance to the council annually, and a formal reserve policy requiring a minimum available fund balance of 16.67% of expenditures." Councilmembers Nutting and Pennington can remember back to where that minimum fund balance in 2015 was approximately 4%. And so council passed an ordinance requiring this performance, and we've met that performance, and that has established solvency and safety for our city. Then we have adequate debt and contingent liability profile not expected to materially worsen over the next two years, and a pension profile we do not consider a credit pressure, and that is well-funded. And finally, their statement said, "The stable outlook reflects our expectations. The city's local economy will continue to trend positively and remain very strong for the foreseeable future." Further supporting the stable outlook is the city's strong financial performance and its maintenance of very strong reserve and liquidity levels that we do not expect to weaken during the next few years. We could raise the ratings should the city continue to strengthen available reserves and if key economic metrics such as wealth and income indicators grow to levels commensurate with those of higher-rated peers." So that is a message that goes out to the investment world of the financial health of our city, and I think that's something that we can all be proud of, the efforts made by council staff and our community to assure the solvency of the city. Okay? I'd like to move on. Thank you.
Michael, if you don't mind, I just want to interject there. You know, I get out in the public, and I've heard critics of these numbers, because the city is, we've talked about these positive numbers and the positive direction the cities come. To have an independent organization like this review us and come up with the same things we've been saying is a very positive thing. A lot of people don't realize it, but this affirms exactly the goals we've been saying. A lot of people don't realize it, but this affirms exactly the goals we were heading for, that what we've been doing and what we've been saying to the public, so I wholeheartedly, on behalf of the council, say thank you. And I'm gonna turn it back over.
Yeah, appreciate that, Mayor. I think that the impact of this is that as the bonds go out for issuance, the interest rate that we pay is less, because the risk of the city being able to honor its commitment is greater. So the advantages to our taxpayers and to our citizens and residents, that we're able to achieve investments in the city that cost less than they would have without this rating. So that's the value, for sure, the immediate value. I'd like to move on. There was mention of SCORE, and I just wanted to give a brief update. There was a question raised by a council member about SCORE, so the most current information. And so my role is to sit on the Administrative Board of SCORE, along with the other five cities now, so there are six cities that are the owner cities. And so representing what SCORE is doing, and, you know, we've worked very diligently with them to help expand their options for income and trying to reduce the city's costs related to SCORE. But recently, there were approximately four fatalities this year so far, and I just wanted to just give a brief update. So one of those was a drug overdose. Two of those were natural event, medical events, and the fourth one is under investigation. Because it's under investigation, can't really say a lot about it. There was an article in the paper recently talking about drug overdoses, and at one point they had four, and by the diligent efforts of their guards and of their staff, they were able to rescue all four of those people. So that was, they administered CPR and they addressed the issue. The state of Washington has instituted new laws requiring certain procedures be followed in the protocol of an investigation if there's a fatality in a jail. So SCORE is adhering to those. Because it's, these are active investigations, I can't really say a lot more about them. These are problems that plague all jails. We think that the quality that SCORE provides, mental health, healthcare, rehabilitation, the incarceration services are all first-rate, and they're sought out by other cities who establish contracts so they can utilize SCORE. These are incredibly unfortunate events that occur, but they did occur, and they're being investigated, and they are anticipating remedial action to try and prevent this in the future. So I just wanted to share that with you, and hopefully, council member, that answers your question. Moving on, I'd like the Chief of Police to give an update regarding parks and homicide investigation that is, I don't know, it's concluded, it's getting there. Thank you, Chief.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, Honorable Counsel, everyone joining us. Tim Gately, Chief of Police, on behalf of the Police Department. First, we've noticed a rise in reports and staff observations of suspicious activities in our public areas and parks. To ensure we maintain a welcoming atmosphere and a safe atmosphere, you'll see an increased police presence and proactive enforcement around our parks and public spaces. We have a zero tolerance for any suspicious or illegal behavior in around our public spaces and our parks and our public areas. Secondly, I have an update on the July 2023 homicide that occurred in the North Safeway Parking Lot. Our Police Department, in collaboration with other agencies, conducted an extensive investigation. Over the past few months, our detectives, support staff, and others have worked very diligently to gather probable cause for the arrest of three suspects. Two of them have been in custody for some time, but locating the third provided to be a little challenging. Recently, our detectives established probable cause for a third suspect's arrest, and a $2 million arrest warrant was issued. Just this week, the North Dakota State Patrol made a traffic stop and located our third suspect. We now have a detective from Des Moines on the ground in North Dakota interviewing the suspect, reviewing the evidence, just making sure all the circumstances lead back to a successful detention. And with all three suspects in custody, I think we can help the victims' families continue to heal, have a better sense of security in our community, and collaborate with local businesses to ensure moving forward, they feel safe as well. So my gratitude for your continued support of public safety in our community. I also, of course, want to personally thank the officers and staff who've been involved, both in North Dakota and in Des Moines. Their diligent work every day deters crime in our community and leads to these safe resolutions, and I think they do it while treating everyone with dignity and respect at the same time. So thank you very much. That concludes my remarks.
Thank you, Chief. I think that adds new meaning to the phrase, "The long arm of the law," which is great. I'm gonna ask Nicole Nordholm, our Parks Director, to come up, and she will introduce Genesis Project and also Lighthouse Northwest to give presentations, but I just wanted to say personally how moving, how difficult, and how much we appreciate the testimony of the people that came up earlier. Thank you. Nicole?
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, Counsel, Nicole Nordholm, Director of Parks, Recreation, and Senior Services. And we have two of our city-funded human services organizations here tonight to present. They will be giving us a glimpse into the incredible work that they provide in our community, while they both are new contracts to the city, as you've heard earlier and as you'll soon find out more on, they have been doing incredible work around the community and the region for a long while. So with that, I will first invite to come up Andy Connor, who's the President and Founder of the Genesis Project. Alyssa Vanderlin is also here, who's the Fundraising and Marketing Director, but Andy has a presentation for us.
Yes. Okay. All right. Well, thank you for having us, and I'll try to keep this short, because I know it was time, I want to be respectful to the Lighthouse and for council members. Usually my trainings are several hours, so Alyssa pared this down pretty quick, so I'll try to get as fast as I can without skipping too much of the information. I've been with the King County Sheriff's Office for over 24 years. We, primarily, I worked in CTAC, which is a contract city of the sheriff's office, and we, of course, work close because we're bordered up against Des Moines. And as a matter of fact, for several stretch years, I think I had more interaction with Des Moines Police than I did with our own, because at one point in time, you guys lent us one of your detectives, and we merged our detective unit when the, on 216 and Pack Highway, where the, a bunch of gang-related incidents were going on, there was just a horrible situation about 15, 20 years ago, and we were able to partner and clean that up. And so I've had a longstanding, good relationship with Des Moines detectives, sergeants, and so anyway, that's kind of my history. It's kind of been talked about a little bit. Pacific Highway, the Northwest region is, just has a long history of prostitution and human trafficking, it just hasn't been really put a light on it up until the last, I would say, last five, seven years, human trafficking really shot up and has become exposed across the United States and everything else. Prior to that, in the early 2000s and even the mid 2000s, it was kind of unknown still, prostitution was thought of as a victimless crime, because they're out there on their own, and they're doing it because they want to do it, because they're out there by themselves, and that was kind of the sentiment for the public and law enforcement. My experience was that, it wasn't too long when I worked in CTAC that I had been encountering girls on the street, and then finally, in a real short, short version, a couple of these gals told me their story, and I realized that it was not that easy for them just to walk away, when people tell them, "Just get out of there, just walk away, you can't walk away." So we'll get into that a little bit here in a minute. A bossman on the FBI Child Exploitation Task Force with the FBI for over 10 years, that's a task force that started two or three of them, now they're over 100 across the nation. They're all over in different cities across the country, and we have, we partner with them, Genesis Project partners with them, Homeland Security, local law enforcement, Des Moines, I think we partner with every local law enforcement in the region here in the last 10 years. Just a little bit about sex trafficking. So the three key words are fraud, force, or coercion. Girls are entered into that lifestyle by fraud, force, or coercion. They're tricked into it, they're forced into it, or by some kind of fraudulent means, they're pushed into that lifestyle. Polaris and National Human Trafficking Hotline, we've got some stats up there, average age of entry is around 13 years old. Sex trafficking is massive worldwide, almost $100 billion industry. 75% of National Human Trafficking Hotline calls involve sex trafficking. Eastern Washington has a lot of labor trafficking, but primarily and dominantly is sex trafficking across the country. There's just some stats there. Every organization has their own way of doing it, those are not even, come from law enforcement, that's just from information that they gather themselves. And I think that's 272 in Washington State for 2020, and we'll see some more here in a second. Human trafficking, National Hotline up there, 95 signals or reports received in Washington State in 2021, and that's just one organization. Like I said, a lot of these organizations don't have access to law enforcement or their book or their reporting systems, and even in the reporting systems, we used to do reporting, we don't do, we don't label it human trafficking, it's all labeled prostitution. And in prostitution, we don't label, there's no, there was no victims labeling, so you can't really record it, and not only that, girls don't self-report themselves, that's just not what they do. So all the stats, you could probably 10 times that by 10, just because that's, it's under-reported, is what I'm trying to say. Since 2010, when I've been on, when we started with the FBI and the task force, this area, Seattle, Seattle metropolitan area has been ranked in the top five places for the country for sex trafficking, which is, you know, what we have here is a perfect storm, we have the I-5 corridor, Port of Seattle, Pacific Highway, International Airport, we're close to the Canadian border, we have large tech businesses, we have large, big sporting teams, high demand, this is like a little hub, it just makes it a hotspot, and I can't go into it a lot, but it's really, pimps and traffickers view trafficking as a business, and a business, you know, business models or business, you know, they'll go around and jump different cities all over the country, they have just a route that they take, and it's no different from traffickers, they'll go where the demand is high, and this is just a hub that makes it high for us, unfortunately. Over the years, we've done a couple of documentaries, The Long Nights, one, Rate for Profits, another, they're both available on iTunes. I brought a couple copies of The Long Night, I left them for city council if you're interested in really seeing an in-depth, in-depth view of what we did and how we started and what it looks like out on the street, it was really well-done by the guy who did it. So over the years, our perspective has changed, and so has the public's perspective has changed as well. We now see that it is a trap, so it's not rocket science, you can imagine how a girl gets trapped in something like this. This is not all, where the girls come from, because a lot of them are tricked, and what's called a boyfriend pimp, a Romeo pimp, they will engage them like they're courting them as a boyfriend, and then trick them into the lifestyle that way. A lot of other girls that I come across come from broken homes or the runaways, they have low self-esteem, physical or sexual abuse is always, almost always a precursor. Substance abuse is either introduced while they're doing it, or it's before, it can go either way. Risk factors, substance, runaway, unstable housing, mental health concerns, all these different factors, it's just, it's easy if you can think about, you know, low self-esteem person, or broken home, or abusive home, these are just perfect scenarios to develop a target for a victim to come into this type of life. Recruitment happens everywhere, and it's just online schools, parties, malls, they've been kidnapped, kidnapped sometimes in the movies, it's, that does happen, but it's not, that is a very small percentage, and a lot of times, the girls that are kidnapped are already in the life and they're being kidnapped by another pimp. We've got a lot of stories like that, but mostly, that does not happen. It's more that they're, it's coercion or fraud or some kind of threat to get them into that lifestyle. More abuse, just lots of abuse in their backgrounds, but like I said, that doesn't always happen. The boyfriend pimp is the most common pimp that just kind of coerces them into that lifestyle, and they're so, you know, once he feels that they, he has them emotionally, you know, domestic violence, I appreciate Lighthouse being, domestic violence and trafficking are hand-in-hand. They cross over, they meld together, because they have, it's a domestic relationship with a lot of these girls. Some other stats, 42% of sex trafficking survivors recruited by a family member or caregiver, which I had no idea until I got into this how prevalent that was. 39% were recruited by intimate partner, and that's kind of iffy, because the intimate partner can be that boyfriend pimp, so we're not really sure how that coincides as far as percentages. Let's see, there we go. So when I started this, after hearing, so 2006, like I said, three young women came to me, told me their stories, and then I discovered how difficult for them is just to walk away, they can't walk away, and just a handful of quick comments is, when they're involved in that lifestyle, the pimp and trafficker will isolate them, take away their identity, take away any support structure they have, they're going to remove that and make them rely solely on them. So to just walk away, they can't, they don't have any resources, very similar to domestic violence. If you have a spouse that is dependent on her husband for financial and that kind of thing, I've heard over and over, being a cop for all these years, "I don't know where to go, I don't have any money, he has all the money." It's very similar to the girls, "I can't leave, he controls everything," or "He has blackmailed me with pictures that he's going to send to my mom, my grandmother of..." We've done stings before, we've confiscated video and pictures of gang rapes and stuff like that to hold against them, that they don't want their sister or their mom seen, and so they, these are the types of things that are, that help to trap them in that lifestyle. And when I heard that, 2006 to 2009, I just started gathering stories and trying to figure out how I could help them. I couldn't find resources specifically to help them, so I was just getting their information so I could try to develop some kind of solution. In 2009 is when I founded it, however, it took me two years to open the center, which you see right there. The main room is on the left, we have some back bedrooms and a boutique for clothing, shoes, and that kind of thing for them when they come in. So today, since the center has been open August 2011, we've had 459 clients come through the doors. We just, I've only started doing the appointments the last probably, I don't know, seven or eight years, so I don't know exactly, there's probably way more appointments than that. Appointments are just case management appointments, or we've connected with them in some way, some program, some resource, some way of helping them into a better lifestyle. This is a picture of a Mother's Day, so we took some clients out to Mother's Day brunch. But what I did learn is that through the stories and what they've told me, it was just, it's not a 12-step program, they can't come in once a week for a counseling session and be good. This was a full-blown, A to Z, comprehensive, you can't just do one little thing and expect it to all change, you have to be all in. So when I discovered that, I kind of figured, well, that's probably why there's not a lot of places out there, because it takes a lot. It takes, I mean, just walking life without, with them, every part of their life. They have so many things that are missing in their life, so our mission is, we exist to offer hope for a new life for young women and girls involved in prostitution, sex trafficking, and commercial sex exploitation. That's a mouthful, but essentially, we rescue, law enforcement does stings, we partner with them, or just patrol deputies on the road, restoration, release, it's a kind of three-phase thing, but it's a holistic, it's an A to Z, comprehensive, it takes a lot of different things. It's really like, and the easiest way to imagine it is just having children. It's raising kids, everything you put into your child, we have to find a way to put into them, and it's difficult because they're broken in so many different ways, and if there's a drug abuse or drug addiction involved in that, that's throwing a whole nother wrench into that whole process of restoration. that's throwing a whole nother wrench into that whole process of restoration. Um, the rescue is the easiest part, in my opinion. It's, and it seems like it wouldn't be, but it is. Once we get a, a girl who wants help, because if you don't want help, it's like an addictive person who's addicted. If you ever had a family member or someone who's addicted and they don't want help, they don't want intervention, you're not going to help them. Because it's until they decide they want help, it's the same with the girls. And it's not that they don't want it, it's that, is there's so many barriers. In their own mind, they can't feel like they can receive it at that time, but when they do want help and when they do come in, uh, one of the case managers will have an intake process and they'll determine all their structures and all their resources and everything that they have that is missing. That, that wagon wheel right there is a perfect analogy. That's their life. So if you think of your own life as a wagon wheel and all the support you have, with all those little community education, family, career, housing, start taking away all those different places, especially healthcare housing or a career, how do you survive? So that's, that's why they can't just up and leave that life. They have all these things missing and taken from them. So we have to one by one, in priority, try to rebuild that structure. And it just takes, it takes a long time. There's just, there's no easy road for it. The restoration, that's the hard part. That's when they come in, time after time, those are those four thousand plus visits, four thousand plus uh connections, case management appointments, housing, GED, Censa Community, job skill, legal aid, a lot of legal issues. We have partners with attorneys. Uh, spiritual growth, Bible studies, therapy, life skills, everything you could think of, just like I said, raising kids. You have to think of this whole process to help them through their walk outside of um that lifestyle. The release, um, long-term housing, financial stability, continued mentorship, healthy relationships, employment. Um, the girls go up and down, it's sometimes they're going like a rock star, then they'll crash. And we gotta help them, pick them up and just bring them back up, just like, it's just, um, it's not easy. I say this a lot because I lived it for a long time, it's not easy. But it's very worthwhile. Um, Christina, Kathleen's mom, who's, you know, so eloquently stated her story is one of the great success stories, and if it was just for her, I would have done it just for her. Because i- i- it's amazing to see the turnaround and to see them get out of that trap of those guys who have them uh constantly under their th- under the thumb. We do graduations, we do job skill training. Um, we partner with a, anybody who will partner with us, we will partner with them because we don't have the resources to do everything that we need to do. So, we're extremely grateful for you and for the grant you guys have given us. That is extremely, extremely grateful. I thank you for that. So, I know you guys sent me some questions. COVID nineteen, of course, that threw a wrench in everybody's life. We were essential, so we stayed open. But what, what hurt us was we could no longer fundraise, we couldn't do events. Uh, we tried to do some online stuff that was just really minimal. So this year, we're so grateful for Des Moines and other cities around here that have given us a small grant, that we can hopefully build that over the years. Uh, that, that was very helpful. But yeah, COVID really affected us. I'm sure other businesses have gone out of business, and it just affected everybody, but we, we couldn't fundraise anymore. Uh, we just relied on just donations online. Um, so that was, that hurt us, and it took a big chunk out of our savings. Impact on law enforcement, COVID. So, obviously, law enforcement didn't shut down, nine-one-one calls are still being made. Um, however, specialty units, a lot of vice units went away because a lot of cops had to go back to patrol uh with other things going on in the country. But the task force, we stopped doing the meetings, we started doing Zoom meetings, and then it just ended. And there was no more stings, no, no more operations. Um, that just shut down completely. Anytime that you stop enforcing something, or stop putting attention, just like earlier in the, in the meeting, um, the chief has mentioned, it'll be, there'll be attention at the parks and more attention, law enforcement attention at different places. When you remove that, that just invites it all to come back. When we, we did this a couple of times at two sixteen in the highway with the Hoover's, uh, the gang problems down there ten, fifteen, twenty years ago. We hit it really hard, then we backed out, it all came back, and we hit it again. But when you take enforcement out of vice, trafficking, prostitution, uh, it just mushroomed. Has anybody been up on Aurora in Seattle lately, or seen a video? They're, they're out in droves, like it was back in Gary Ridgeway day, days in the nineties on Park Highway, they're out by the twenties and thirties. And it's, it's out of control. And there's just not enough enforcement units to do it. So, COVID really put a huge hurt on specialty units. And Aurora up there is a big, a big uh result of that. A lot of stuff is done online. Um, so, anyway, moving on, volunteers. Uh, we love volunteers because we couldn't li- work without them. We, we have a plethora of different ways you can, you can uh get involved. We have ladies that give us meal trains, celebrations, administrative tasks, donations, client outings, like you saw at the Mother's Day. This is a cooking class, one of our gals is in a culinary school right now, and she's doing really, really well in that. So she put on a cooking session for Genesis Project, she cooked for all the staff and the volunteers, and it was a great, great event. We have two fundraising events over the course of a year. Freedom Golf Termit is in July of twenty twenty-four, we just had that. And our big one is the Night of Hope Auction and Gala, which is coming up November fourth, here in C-Tech at the C-Tech Marriott. Uh, that's what keeps us going, keeps the lights on and the bills paid. Um, so, a- anybody and everyone is welcome to come to that. Uh, it's a good event, it's a fun event, a lot of our clients come. Um, you know, Christina's been coming for years and she helps see me with the, the candy give-out all, every year, so it's fun with her. So yeah, it's a great event, uh, even if you just want to come and check it out and see everything that's going on. We, um, it's been, uh, we've got it pretty honed down the last few years, and Alyssa is my main gal that's running that this year. I had, uh, we don't have a video, but I had a video, but for lack of time, I just want to be respectful of everybody. I just want to cut it a little bit short too. If anybody had any questions, I know I kind of burned through that, and believe me, I could go on for hours just with stories and other information. So, thank you for having me, and uh, is there any questions for anything?
First, uh, if you would send a, a invite to the ca- the councils so we can
Absolutely.
Take that, that'd be appreciated. Oh, I got some questions, I'll start with uh Councilmember Oxiger.
Yes, thank you for the presentation. Can you uh revert back to the slide on the perfect storm?
How do I go backwards? Up? Okay. Right there.
Okay. I'm just curious, what is the, what is the large tech businesses?
So you have Microsoft, Amazon, Boeing.
Right.
Um, so, traffic. All right, I'll ge- I can give you a couple of examples. Uh, I worked an off-duty job, Port of Seattle, when they were putting in the new parking garage up there. And wherever the traffic and the demand is, i- is where the girls are going to be. So, I, I worked that all night and five, four, five, six in the morning, when Boeing traffic would go north to Boeing, um, they would all come out. And I pulled, I don't know how many pulled over with Boeing badges and everything else. But there's also a lot of, all the, all the um, the, not just the, the traffic or going to jobs or that job, but the events that they have, the twenty-four-seven business that, that operates like in the hotels. Uh, I don't know how many stings that we did locally at C-Tech PD, when we busted somebody, they're here for a conference from Microsoft. We, we, we arrested a CEO for one of these companies, we arrested um countless, Amazon, uh, Microsoft, Boeing, people from not this state, from other states coming in for a conference. Uh, so, the, the, the businesses, I mean, are great, and are good in a lot, in a, in a, in a good way, in a big way. But they're also, they bring in, it's just, it's not that they're bad, it's just they bring in traffic. They bring in lots of different um, for the different conferences. And the, the airport, it just all melds together with the airport twenty-four-seven. I mean, all the hotel beds in C-Tech, it's the most in the entire state of Washington, all are concentrated right there. They're always full. All the different uh conferences or seminars or whatever, it's, it's a constant thing going on twenty-four-seven. Uh, from two thousand nine to two thousand twelve, the City of C-Tech City Council got fed up with what was going on, and they charged our sergeant, which was the vice unit sergeant at the time. He said, I want you guys doing full-time vice because this is out of control. They were everywhere. And, and so we did that for two thousand nine to two thousand twelve, that's when those documentaries were done. Uh, we contacted uh over five hundred adult females, over two hundred and fifty juvenile females, and over six hundred males. Just with our four-man unit in the ci- in and around the City of C-Tech on this type of stuff right here. Uh, that was just our, that was my own personal experience, and we, our sergeant tracked how many times that, that, that we did, we contacted each person. That's when we were talking about the Boeing workers, Amazon, and the um Microsoft, one of the Microsoft CEOs got caught up in that. But, and it was on a conference, we did a lot of hotel stings where we would wait for these conferences to come to town, we'd do a sting and we'd catch these guys. Airline pilots from out, out of state. Um, uh, the list goes on and on. But just all the little things, those are all just factors that create that perfect storm of demand. And the, there's no sleeping, it's a twenty-four-seven area. And all that, um, all the tech, the big tech sporting events, anytime that happens in town, they bring them in because that's where the demand is. And so, I hope that answers your question.
Well, yeah, so, okay, and specifically then about the professional sporting events, we have the World Cup
Yep.
Coming. What are you, how do you gear up to handle something like that and, and?
Well, that's where the FBI Task Force and the Homeland Security Task Force, they're going to do off, sting operations, they did it uh for the uh MLB All-Star Game. Uh, so, it brings up huge demand, a lot of men come to these types of things. And so that's where the demand is, so that's where they come in, and then the stings are, are geared around those events to try to uh put a quash on that. But, I mean, with all, with COVID and everything else, like I haven't heard from the task force in I don't know how long. And Homeland Security, they just, when they do these operations, they're between forty and sixty agents, cops or detectives, and they just, there's not enough cops to do it. They just can't do it.
So, are you getting any help from, we just had Major League Baseball here? Or with the World Cup uh coming and stuff, are you getting any help from those organizations uh as far as?
No. I, you know, we're small, but I reach out to everybody I could possibly reach out, most time I don't hear zip from anybody. But we're small, you know, I suppose if a bigger, higher-up person were to do something, we would, that would help. But there's been so many times, even then just locally, I'd reach out to people to partner with, and I don't get anything back. So, it's just, that's why I appreciate us, you guys having us here, so.
Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Buxton, and then I'll go to you, City Manager.
More a, a comment and a thank you for not only just continuing to stick with it, growing the organization, and just a growing willingness to partner even with other local agencies, like although I think the Raindrops that you had over there, just with education, workforce training, partnering with the college, partnering with A New, just continuing to work those partnership relationships down here and around uh our city, really appreciated. So, thank you for that work.
So I have C- City Manager, and then I'll go to you, Councilmember Nutting, and then I see the two of you over there.
Yeah, th- th- thank you very much, extremely informative. My question is, when you do the sting operations, they apprehend the Johns. What, what, could you just comment relative to prosecution? And where are you, kind of your personal view of the effectiveness of, of the justice system in addressing issues like that?
So, on, that's where that thing has changed. In the early two thousands and even beyond, what would happen is a girl will get picked up, and if there was a John there, he would provide a statement against her. Now it's the other way around. So we will, we will get statements from the girls to prosecute the Johns. Now, all the sex fires and all the stings that happen now, they all get booked. And that wasn't the case ten, fifteen, twenty years ago. Um, so, all of that, all of that type of situation is reversed, which is a good thing. We give, the girls that we come in contact, we give them um the resources. And i- it's a hard sell though sometimes, because it's like one out of ten, when I talk to a girl, one out of ten is ready to get out of that life. But what I do is, I'll at least introduce some kind of pathway for them, because what's happened many times is, I'll talk to a girl on the street, two in the morning, or a sting, and then she'll come back to GP two or three years later, when she is ready. Unfortunately, she has to go through another ton of trauma to get there, but she remembered and comes back. As far as the Johns, um, you know, it's, I don't have a lot of sympathy or empathy. I know what I did try to do um a long time ago was get a John school, because I heard in Tacoma's John School, they did some research and that had the, probably the highest percentage of non-repeated crimes. So the Johns that went through that did what happened to me. They would hear a girl come in and give her story and tell them, I didn't want to be with you. I didn't want to do this, I was forced to do it. And by knowing that, I think, help them not repeat that process. Because Tacoma had a great success story with, I don't know what the percentage was, but it was, it was, it was high. So I tried to do that with C-Tech or in this area, but, you know, I got three kids, a wife and other stuff, I just, I can only do so much.
The, the, but the follow-up part of that is, are you, are you satisfied with the prosecution that occurs with, with, with the criminal activity of the Johns? Do you feel they're prosecuted effectively enough, sentenced enough, just, just your opinion?
Yeah, so e- early on, no, because prior to, uh, I think it was two thousand and twelve, was if you got arrested as a John, you bought a girl, uh, it was a hundred dollar fine, one day in jail max. So, Representative Tina Orwell, which is your guys' rep, uh, she went on a ride along with me back in two thousand and eleven or twelve. I told her everything I'm telling you guys, and she got really passionate about trafficking uh rights. She went and wrote a bill that I went and testified uh with, and I've been down to Olympia several times testifying on these things. It came back and we reorganized it, it's the same bill I think you guys utilize today. I call it the John Bill, it's basically um, whenever you got John comes in your courts and they're prosecuted, they have to do a fine, fifteen hundred dollars first offense, twenty-five second, five thousand third offense. That, those funds go to the city, the city budget, but the, it can be, it's split, and it can only be used for law enforcement against trafficking, just like a drug fund. It can only, that, those funds can only be used for the law enforcement, half of that, and half of it goes to a uh direct service provider. She basically wrote that bill for Genesis Project and C-Tech, but it's utilized all over the state. And so those funds now can help us, uh, or help Des Moines, you can do whatever you want to do with yours. Kent has an advocate that they pay full-time as their service provider. But the funds have to be used for uh enforcement and trafficking, and the other half has to go to a direct service pri- provider in their area. So that was a huge plus. And then she's, she's done several other things, and we, I've testified many times on confiscating pimps' property, uh, all their money, and it goes back into, the girls can get recompense for that. So I'm, I'm satisfied with how it's, the direction is going, yeah.
Councilmember Nutting.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you very much for the presentation and for what you do. It's, it's incredible, and I know it's tireless work that y- you, you get to see the rewards, but not all too often. So, um, thank you for that. Um, and, and I know it's not much, but uh, Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we donate um five hundred dollars from the Hearts of Mine Fund
Do have a second.
To the Genesis Project.
Say a second for Councilmember Pennington. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, raise your right hand. I got Councilmember Pennington, Deputy Mayor Buxton, Councilmember Nutting, Councilmember Oxiger and myself, all those opposed. Councilmember Harris, uh, as I said, five hundred dollars will be coming your way.
Thank you.
We appreciate it. And now I move, then I, I got a few other council members, moving on to Councilmember Harris, and then Councilmember Pennington.
Thank you. I'm uh struck by the long game aspect of this. It sounds like you may have interactions with uh women uh and men um several times before they're, they actually
Yes.
Take you up on it, and then maybe some misfires and so on.
Yep.
And uh I'm struck by how that's similar to homelessness or addiction or anything, basically, you know, it just takes a lot of tries sometimes. My question, I guess, to the long game is um, do you see, are there opportunities, or do you see a need for long-term counseling?
Yes. We provide trauma counseling from the day they come. Yes. We provide trauma counseling from the day they come in, uh, for professional trauma counselors, yeah.
Okay.
I do see that.
I'm, I'm thinking of this in terms of uh, without going into, but I have a family member who's had, you know, with experience like this, and she um, it's been twenty, thirty years, you know? And there are still, it's almost like an AA thing, where, you know, you could benefit from having counseling literally ongoing for the rest of your life. And so I'm just asking if you see some kind of role uh or, or for, you know, like, it's like sort of a habits and behavior things that you just have to keep going back to year after year.
And, and that's a good question, because I do see a lot of that. A lot of the girls are in a, uh, well, we, we say that the girls that come to GP have to be at fifty-one percent. That means they have to be at least one percent above a level of trying to get out of that situation. If they're at forty-nine percent or below, it's like an addict who doesn't want to get clean. It's just, it's, it pulls all our resources to, for nothing. So they have to be at a level that they want. And the more that they want it, the faster and the farther they'll go. Christina wanted it, and she's out completely and doing really well. There's other girls I can tell you that were at ninety, ninety-five percent. Those girls went out quick and they never looked back. The girls that are fifty-five, sixty, fifty-eight percent, those take forever because they're still tied to that whatever. And it's a, it's, you know, I'm not a magic person. I can't tell, everyone's different. All the girls are different from different backgrounds. So we try as best we can to find out what that is that's holding them to offer them something better. But it's just, it's difficult. The, the, the abuse, the trauma and stuff is, it's different. People can handle it differently. And so n- uh, not knowing where that girl came from, or everything that she's going through, or how she offers or deals with it, we're just trying to offer everything we can to help them, but it comes down to them. It really comes down to their desire and their want to get out of that situation and get into a better place.
No, I, I, your, your point is well taken. I'm just saying that there will be habits and, you know, behavioral things that happen during, when you're being, you know, in this life that um stick with you just uh fifteen, twenty years down the road. And um, you know, tha- that's just, there, I don't know if there's anything you can do about it, but it's um something like AA that uh it would just benefit, I, I think, a lot of uh people, just.
Yeah, they're definitely scarred with stuff that they're gonna.
Yeah.
Carry with them for a long time.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Councilmember Pennington.
Thank you. Thank you for coming and, and sharing. It's, it's incredible work. It's, I mean, it's hard to put words to it, but it's, it's a, a calling. And I, I know you're a deputy, and so i- is this your assignment? I, I mean, just so that I, or, or wh- is this what you do off duty?
Uh, so back in two thousand nine to two thousand twelve, it was my assignment. But I've been in patrol my whole career. I just infused myself into it, basically. I've never been a detective, even though I've been on a task force for the FBI and went through all that process. Uh, we didn't have that position available. So left in drug crimes and vice, ours did the same thing. So we never had a position for that. So over the years, I just inserted myself and asked my supervisors if I can do this and do that, and they said yes, and so I did. But for Genesis Project, yeah, it's, anything I do there, other than taking a girl to that place, is an off-duty thing.
That's, that's pretty incredible. And, you know, I, I would hope that King County would, would see the value, and I'm sure they do to a degree, but there's so much in that, you know, that they, that, you know, they're talking about homeless, and we're talking about, you know, uh, that drug, public drug use, and, and there's so much focus on that. And, and I, I, I really wish this to become a, a greater priority across not just, you know, the, the King County system, but, but, you know, communities ac- all across the board, because this is, you know, all of those things are, are so important. All of those things can change the trajectory of someone's life if, if they're put into the right connections at the right time of their life. And, and, you know, I, and I don't know if, if, how that can be done in, in terms of, of organizing that, but making it such a priority. And I, and, and, and Tina has done a great job at, 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 at being an advocate. And, and I, I just think, you know, maybe there's, there's another way that we can help support the Genesis Project as a, as a region, as a whole. Because what, what you've done and what, and the model that you've put together, you know, is, is something that should be sustainable. And, and I, you know, we all, we all come to a point in our careers where we re- we retire, and, and then, you know, there, there's, has to be sustainability be, you know, for the long term, because it's so important. And so that's what I would, would encourage, you know, this council and, and others, and, you know, to, to look at that. And how can this become a, a regional priority for the, the really long haul, the generational long haul? Because it's not gonna stop. There has to be an exit when, when they want it. And so that needs to be something that, that I think is, as governance bodies go forward, thi- this presentation is absolutely incredible, and, and, and it really should be shared a lot more. And, and, and you should come to the forefront a lot more. Thank you so much for what you're doing.
Thank you for having me, and thank you for partnering with us. Appreciate it.
Thank you. As a father of two daughters, thank you. Michael, you have the.
Thank you.
Thank you.
With, with that, I think we'll uh. Move on, Nicole, to uh Lighthouse Northwest.
Uh, yes, so finally, we would like to welcome Sarah Tuttle, the Executive Director from Lighthouse Northwest. And we also have Bobby Joe Shockley, who's their Development Director. Come on up.
Thank you for having us here tonight. Thank you, Genesis Project, for what you're doing. It's gonna take all of us working in collaboration to build a healthy, thriving community. Do you agree?
Right. It takes all of us. We can't do this on our own. The need is too great. You highlighted so much of exactly what we do, so I love that I can share a little bit about Lighthouse Northwest. I am Sarah Tuttle. I'm the Executive Director and founder. Lighthouse grew out of my own story, my family's battle to break the cycle of abuse and build a new, thriving life that we absolutely love to live. I am a longtime resident of the Des Moines area. I think I've been here since ninety-six, ninety-seven. I, I love our city. I love South King County. This is my home. And our mission with Lighthouse, it's a local nonprofit, and we work to break the cycle of domestic abuse, one relationship at a time. That's what we do. We really come alongside women and children and help them thrive in healthy relationships and build lives that are thriving. I'm excited to update you about what's happening at Lighthouse this past year. Thank you, City Council. Thank you, city, for partnering with us financially. We appreciate your support. And also thank you for recognizing October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. That's how we raise awareness of the critical need for services such as Genesis Project and Lighthouse. Uh, why do we do what we do? The statistics are alarming. One in three women will experience domestic abuse. And that's regardless of socioeconomic status, education, race, religion. So that's one in three in your neighborhood, one in three in your workplace, one in three at the gym, one in three in this very room. And every year, ten million children witness violence in the home. That breaks down to about one in fifteen kids. And what we know is that those that witness violence firsthand as children, they're twice as likely to become perpetrators or victims of abuse, because abuse is a learned pattern of behavior. The statistics are alarming and the need is great, but I come saying there is hope. Change is possible. Breaking the cycle of abuse is possible. New life is possible for anyone given a chance. That's what they need, for anyone given the resources and safe, supportive community to heal and build. And that's exactly what Lighthouse does. Our Abuse and Trauma Recovery Program is called RISE, very similar to what um you were saying about AA. We need a community that people can connect to for the long haul, to break cycles and patterns. Um, our RISE program is a trauma-informed approach to healing and building a thriving and independent life and healthy relationships. We believe that healing only happens in the context of relationship, not in isolation, and that new life develops in a safe and supportive community. Through RISE, we provide a, let me push this, sorry. Here's a little bit more about us. Through RISE, we provide a safe community, as well as critical services and proven resources, including advocacy, mentoring, life skills training, counseling, case management, parenting and communication coaching, assistance with education and job training, children's programs, support groups, workshops. It's a lot, would you agree, to build a new life and start over? And our goal is to meet all of those needs and help them build a life that's not just for now, but sustainable for the future. We work to partner with each woman and child that comes to us to identify individually what are the obstacles to their success? What's blocking them from healing? What's standing in the way? Is it a job? Is it childcare? Is it needing support, a place to process the past, whatever it is? And then we help them overcome those ob- obstacles so they can live independently again. There are two parts to our RISE program. The first is Sasha's House. That's our community living home right here in Des Moines. We've been serving women and children for the past ten years. And uh, we house up to three families at a time for up to two years. Takes a long time to build a new life. The families at Sasha's House come to us after facing homelessness due to domestic abuse. The families partner with our care team, our staff, which includes a mentor, a program manager and life coach. And they work to stabilize, achieve their goals, and build a sustainable new life. I want to report that this year, the city of Des Moines has helped us provide safety and critical care for fifteen women and children at Sasha's House. That includes twelve specific residents of Des Moines and three residents of C-Tech, which this equates to one thousand one hundred and twenty-five individual safe bed nights since just January. So thank you for your help in this. I'd like to share, a recent graduate from Sasha's House shared, Sasha's House has been an amazing experience, and I have gained a whole new family and the tools I need to be successful on my own again. The program was above and beyond any expectations I had. The staff followed through and really helped me. I feel empowered. This program was a light at the end of a very dark tunnel. I'm so grateful. I was in a terrible place in my life before like, before Sasha's House. I now know that I'm worth fighting for. I love that. Before new families move in, they write letters. So the women and kids write letters to the new women coming in, because they know it's a scary step to move into a home that you don't know anybody. Who are these people? So here's some excerpts from their letters. "I remember the exact place you're in right now and how scary it must be. I just want you to know, this is the safest place I have ever been in my life. You're going to overcome so many obstacles and challenges and struggles here and feel the most love." Another woman wrote, "Welcome home. You are now in the best place you can be. The amount of healing here is abundant. Just know, you will never be alone again. You are part of the Lighthouse family, whether you're with us for three months or two years. We stay connected with every single family that is a part of Lighthouse. And we get to hear their stories of success. A hundred percent of our program graduates transitioned to independent, permanent housing, and it's sustainable to this day." Another woman wrote, "I'm so excited for you to start your journey at Sasha's House. The staff will show you what real love is and what real family should be like. I've never experienced this much genuine love and care from anyone before. Now that you're here, you and your children are safe and your new life begins." We witness the miraculous at Sasha's House. It is breathtaking and inspiring to watch the women and children heal and build thr- build thriving lives that they love. That's the first part of our program. The second part of our program, we launched less than a year ago, and it's our RISE community meetings. We looked at the past ten years and what we were accomplishing with the women and children at Sasha's House and thought, how do we open this up to serve more people in the community? And that's where we birthed the community meetings. These meetings are open to any woman who's experienced domestic abuse or trauma at any point in her life, whether recently or decades ago. Women of all ages participate in our RISE community meetings. We have young women in their twenties, up to women in their sixties and seventies, because healing is a lifelong journey. It's a process. Our meetings, we meet twice a month for a support group, and then workshops and activities, as well as walking beside the women with individual advocacy. Everything is purposefully designed to build relationships, discussion, to educate, to equip and empower sustainable life change and independence. Before each meeting, we start with a shared dinner to build community. And I'm so excited to share that it's local churches and organizations in the Des Moines area that provides those meals. So that communicates to the women that they matter. They're not alone, that there's a community standing behind them and beside them. A woman in our support group recently shared, "Being able to talk out things from my past that I hadn't healed from in a safe environment is what seems to be helping. No judgment, no opinions telling me what to do or not to do. Sharing with people who have been through similar events is helpful. I feel more and more healed with every support group." During support group, we explore topics that address the impact of abuse and what the healing process is. We, by identifying types and patterns of abuse, we talk about personal safety, healthy relationships, what is self-care, emotional health, communication, identity, trust, healthy boundaries, positive parenting. Every aspect of their lives, we help address and build them up and equip them. Another woman shared that support group is giving me the space to reflect on the impact of my childhood trauma, heal and grow into who I was created to be. We are, been so excited at the number of women who've reached out to us to join our RISE community meetings. Less than a year ago, we started with five women and two children. We have grown to forty-five women and children regularly participating in our RISE support group and workshops. I field calls every single day and continue to add people to our waitlist for the next group that will start in the coming months. This includes twenty-nine Des Moines residents, that's who we're serving, and sixteen residents of neighboring cities. And we are so excited. We have just started with this. It is going to take off, and we cannot believe at how much the growth has happened so short. And we could not do this without your support and the support of the community. We are thrilled to report to the city that we fulfilled our minimum requirement of bed nights, residents served, and case management within the first quarter of this year. Between our RISE community meetings and Sasha's House, since January, our staff and volunteers have provided two hundred and seventy-eight case management meetings for residents of Des Moines and two hundred and forty-one for residents of local neighboring cities. We are excited to partner with you, and this is just the beginning. I believe we can build a community that is free of domestic abuse, a community that supports one another, that works together in collaboration, and I'm excited to see what happens in this next year. So October is Domestic Violence Awareness Month. This is our big fundraising time. We have postcards for anyone that would like to take them, and we want to invite you, because you're probably wondering, like, what can I do to help, right? I'll just put that question out for you. Why, the way that you can help right now is by participating in our celebrate events. So um, October fourteenth is the date a mark on your calendars. We kick this off with our annual five K. We partner with the Des Moines Creek Park Run. Nine AM, we go down there. Bobby Joe has our purple shirt you get when you register. And we want the community to know that we're here. The funds, yes, they help us break the cycle of abuse and offer hope, but more than anything, we want to say, we're here. We want people to know that we're available. So join us for the five K. You can run it, you can walk it, you can observe it. It's okay. We will be there. Um, and then afterwards, we're gonna have an after-party at the Quarter Deck. We have live music. Our auction items will be there to preview. And we just want to get to know more of you in the community. So we encourage you to register for that. Our online auction goes live tomorrow. We have incredible things there. Again, it's all listed on the postcard. And then lastly, that evening on the fourteenth, we're gonna gather together for our Celebrate the Journey event. And this is where we share survival, survivor stories. We let you know even more what's happening within Lighthouse and the families we serve. We also have a fun dessert dash. Our auction comes to an exciting close. We have an amazing raffle opportunity. So please take a postcard. Share this with everyone you know, because we need to spread the word that we are here and that we're here to help. So thank you. Thank you for this opportunity to share an update. Thank you again for your commitment to break the cycle of domestic abuse in our community. And we are so grateful for your partnership, and we know this is just the beginning. So thank you. So, thank you. Are there any questions?
Councilmember Harris.
Yes.
Points for salesmanship, but the product sells itself.
Yes.
I do have a question. I have, I'm mostly deaf, but did you say something about having three beds or living units?
So, we have a community living home right in Des Moines, and we house up to three families. And so, each family has their own. Only three. And each family has their own private bedroom and bathroom, and the rest is shared space.
Three?
Yeah.
That's it?
That is what we house in our community living home. And what the beautiful thing is, is that if we can help a family break the cycle of abuse, it doesn't stop with them.
I hear you.
It's beautiful how it spreads through their community.
No, maybe I'm not being, okay, three.
Yes.
Is a not, probably not meeting the demand.
Oh, no. There's no way. There's no way. We could open a home every week and fill it.
That's...
Yeah, yeah, yeah. There's no way.
Three is like, yeah.
Yeah, we're just beginning. That's right. And we work in collaboration with every organization that we can connect with. They refer to us, we refer to them because it does take all of us working together.
Do you have some notion of the demand?
The demand, I receive at least 10 phone calls a week of people needing housing.
If you had 50 living spaces?
We'd fill it.
100?
We'd fill it.
Thank you.
Councilmember Nutting.
Yeah, I really appreciate what you do, and I know Bobby Joe on a personal level, and it's incredible. And so, thank you guys for everything and what you do. And again, I'd like to make the same motion. I know it's not a ton, but, or a lot, but I know you guys can make 500 bucks go a long way, so I motion that $500 from the Hearts of Mine Fund, which is a fund that our council pays into from their stipend, goes to the Lighthouse.
Thank you.
You have a second? Second for, we've got two of them, but we'll say we got a second for Councilmember Pennington and Deputy Mayor Buxton.
Thank you.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, raise your right hand. I see Councilmember Pennington, Deputy Mayor Buxton, Councilmember Nutting, Councilmember Oxger and myself, all those opposed, Councilmember Harris. So, we know you'll use the money well, and I have to speak about your event. Wonderful. I've been there and the dessert dash is very competitive.
Yes.
And I plan on winning this year.
Oh, do you?
Anyway, so, somebody beat me out on one dessert and I was like, we'll let it happen this year. Anyway, thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Oh, I'm sorry, Deputy Mayor Buxton.
Well, I just can't let you leave without saying my thanks as well. You know, I'm a huge supporter and, you know, I'll be racing the mayor. I'll put my tennis shoes on. But no, really, amazing work. I appreciate you guys so much. Thank you for everything you do and appreciate that you're in the community. And maybe one of these days, 50 or 100 rooms, right? So, you've got the energy.
We do. We've got an amazing team of staff and volunteers, and we believe that we can successfully break the cycle as we work together. And I will say, if you're coming to the 5K, be on the lookout for Purple People because we have a very neat experience for you to kind of take in some of our survivor stories. So, keep your eyes out by the marina.
Councilmember Pennington.
Again, thank you for the work you did. I had the opportunity to come to your fundraiser last year and stories are absolutely incredible, absolutely incredible, and the successes and how these folks have moved on and be able to have a functional life, you know? That they're happy and content and you just can't, you know, I mean, that's an incredible thing that you guys do.
Thank you so much.
You know, something occurred to me that maybe would help both organizations, but you know, the county's been buying up these hotels, you know, to, and I, being my background in EMS, you know, you go there and you see a lot of the activities, but you know, is there something through that funding that could be accessed for both organizations for housing for folks and transitional and some of that? Maybe that's just a thought, it's an idea, I don't know if it's possible, but certainly I would think it would be a heck of a lot more successful than what they're doing now with what they have now. Not to disparage that, but certainly there's a lot of activity around some of those folks, some of those folks and the hotels and the things that they're staying in. So, maybe there's another look there, I don't know. But thank you both for coming.
Thank you for that idea. Thank you so much, Council.
Great, Mayor, that concludes our semi-final report for tonight. I'm just going to add on to that really quick before we move on to the consent agenda. I'm challenging council in October, council meetings and the public, wear purple to our meetings to honor domestic violence. Thank you. All right. Will the city clerk please read the consent agenda?
Item one, approval of vouchers. Item two, approval of minutes. Item three, Domestic Violence Awareness Month proclamation. Item four, September 2023 as Suicide Prevention Month in Washington proclamation. Item five, draft resolution 23-047, setting a date for public hearing for Street Vacation, 18th Avenue South, and that concludes the consent calendar, Mayor.
You have a motion?
I move that the consent calendar is passed as read.
You have a second? A second for Councilmember Pennington. Is there any council member that wishes to pull an item? Seeing none, all those in favor of the consent agenda, raise your right hand, and it is unanimous as it should be. All right, thank you. All right, give me a second here. There's two proclamations that I'll need to read before we can move to the next order of business. And I brought my glasses to make sure. Here we go. Whereas, every one of our residents deserves to live a life free from violence and abuse. And whereas, anyone can be a victim of domestic violence regardless of age, sex, ability, ethnicity, sexual orientation, socio-economic status or religion. And whereas, children that grow up in violent homes are believed to be abused and neglected at a higher rate, a rate higher than the national average. And whereas, Domestic Violence Awareness Month provides an excellent opportunity for our community to learn more about preventing domestic violence and to show support for the numerous organizations and individuals providing critical advocacy, services and assistance to its victims. Now therefore, the Des Moines City Council wishes to recognize October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month and encourages the community to ensure that the victims of domestic violence know that they are not alone and we are here to support the survivors of domestic violence as they courageously move forward to enjoy full and healthy lives. Signed this day, Matt Mahoney. Moving on, okay. Whereas, suicide is the ninth leading cause of death in Washington State and the 11th leading cause in the United States. Whereas, it is estimated that over 3,699 hospitalizations in Washington were linked to intentional self-harm, including suicide attempts. And whereas, the number of people in Washington that died by suicide in 2022 was 1,234. And whereas, in 2022, 267 veterans and military personnel died by suicide in Washington State. And whereas, American Indian and Alaska Native Personnel Communities in Washington had higher rates of suicide than all other racial and ethnic groups in the state. And whereas, suicide was the second leading cause of death among youth from 15 to 24 years old. And whereas, suicide most often occurs when stressors exceed the current coping abilities of someone living with a mental health condition. And whereas, many people who died by suicide did not receive effective behavioral health services due to the difficulty associated with assessing services by healthcare providers trained in the best practices to reduce suicide risk, prejudice and discrimination surrounding the use of behavioral health treatment. And whereas, while there is no single cause of suicide and no single suicide prevention program or effort that will be appropriate for all populations or communities, initiatives based on the goals detailed in the National Strategy for Suicide Prevention and the Washington State Suicide Prevention Plan to increase access to quality mental health, substance use and suicide prevention services will help prevent suicide. And now therefore, the Des Moines City Council hereby recognizes September 2023 as Suicide Prevention Month in Washington and asks that all the people in our city and state join in the special observance. Signed this day, Mayor Matt Mahoney. Sorry, I, a little touched, particularly as a veteran, hearing the statistics about those and knowing many people in the Native American population that I've seen firsthand suffer those consequences, that one runs deep with me. Anyway, Michael, I'm going to turn over, we're going to start new business. We're going to talk about the Solid Waste Restructure Contract Amendment, and that'll be presented by Laura Toshiko.
Good evening. Laura Toshiko, Planning and Development Services Manager. So, earlier this year, the city negotiated a new solid waste contract, a collection contract with Recology King County that schedules to start on January 1st, 2024, and that full contract is included in tonight's packet. At that time, it was known that King County was in the process of changing its rate structure for use of the county's solid waste system and that an amendment to our new contract would be needed prior to its start. The city worked with our consultant, Epicenter Services, on the original contract and on this amendment, and Jeanette Jurgensen is here tonight and will provide an overview of King County's new rates and the amendments to the Recology contract that are needed to address these changes. So, I'm going to turn it over to Jeanette. And is it just?
Yeah, just the... Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Council, staff and guests. I'm Jeanette Jurgensen from Epicenter Services, and I'm here to share a little bit of information on the contract amendment due to the King County rate restructure. So, the purpose of tonight's presentation is to seek council approval on the amendment of the Recology contract between Recology and the city due to the rate restructure by King County. Sorry, I'm trying not to read the slide verbatim. So, a little bit of background on this. King County's Solid Waste Division, where's all your garbage goes, collects the majority of its revenues from the per-ton tipping fees. So, as waste is expected to go down as they roll out new recycling programs, they want to switch to a utility model. And this utility model is going to have a fixed annual charge for every city, and it will keep the per-ton tipping fee, but it will be lower. And this is in order to cover all the costs not related to disposal. So, the tipping fee will cover disposal and the fixed annual charge will cover recycling and waste reduction programs. This is considered a revenue-neutral model in that the amount of revenue that King County is hoping to get with the straight tipping fee should be the same as with the tipping fee and the fixed annual charge. And this is expected to stabilize revenues as we move into the future, reducing waste and increasing our recycling. So, this has an effect on collection contracts with hauler billing, such as what Des Moines has. Currently, your contract allows for the rates to be adjusted in the service component by CPI and in the disposal component by the King County tipping fee. It does not list anywhere this new fixed annual charge. So, we need to amend the contract in order for Recology to collect this money from customers to pay the county. Cities have worked with their haulers to come up with a way to distribute the fixed annual charge across the customer base, so all Recology cities have the same model that we're proposing in the amendment. A reconciliation was added to this. This was one of the unique features of Recology against the other haulers. And basically, as you have a variable customer base, so customers are increasing and decreasing over time, and they know they're never going to collect the exact amount, there's a reconciliation so that they're not ever pocketing extra money and they're never short on this fixed annual charge. So, the full calculations are in the packet, but I'll go over a quick overview. And the county is going to assign each city a fixed annual charge based upon your previous garbage contribution, and those numbers should be out Monday, I believe. Recology is going to allocate that fixed annual charge across your customer base and then collect that money from customers. They are going to track what they collect against what they've paid to the county, and then any over-collection or under-collection will adjust future rates. In the last year of the contract, slightly more fixed annual charge will be collected than what the current formula shows, and this is just to ensure that there's no over-collection or no under-collection, that they're not short. And then any extra will be given to the city. And I'd like to clarify, this is expected to be a very small amount, just cents for each customer, so not a considerable amount of money. It would be much more postage to try to reimburse customers than what we're expecting this amount to be. Starting in January, customers will see a new line item on their bill, which will be called the King County Fixed Annual Charge. This charge will be based upon the size of the garbage container, so the smaller container you have, the smaller charge, the larger container, the larger your charge. King County has agreed to create a website and information for customers, and then Recology has agreed to include this messaging in their annual mailer, on bills, on their website and social media. So, we're trying to get everybody to one source for the information about the fixed annual charge. The financial impacts to your community, the first one, I mentioned that the rate restructure was revenue-neutral, but it coincides with a 9.6% increase in solid waste fees. So, the change that you're going to be seeing in the solid waste fees for disposal are due to that 9.6% increase, not necessarily the rate restructure. We're expecting, again, numbers will be out Monday, but we're expecting customers with the 32-gallon garbage cart, which is the most common service level, to pay $1 to $2 per month. So, it's relatively minor. This implementation of the fixed annual charge does align with the start of your new contract. We were here a year and a half ago, and so, Des Moines has about a 20% to 25% increase in rates with the new contract, and then you will have this new charge on top of that. I do want to assure you though, the other cities that have gone through recent procurements are looking at like 50% increases in rates. So, you guys, while it will be shocking, it is not as bad as some of the other cities are facing currently. And then again, exact rates will be calculated in October, so we'll have those very, very So, the options this evening are to approve the contract amendment, not to approve the contract amendment, or to take some other action. This information was presented to the Ad Hoc Franchise Committee, and their recommendation was to bring it to full council for approval, and staff does recommend approving the proposed So, is that, can Laura and I answer any questions for you on this topic?
Councilmember Nutting.
I move to approve the contract amendment to the 2024-2033 Recology-King County Comprehensive Garbage Recycling and Compostables Collection Service Contract and authorize the city manager to sign the amendment substantially in the form as submitted, and, okay.
Okay, do I have a second? Does that, does that second, Councilmember Harris? Okay. Counsel. Okay. Any discussion? Councilmember Harris. And then I see Councilmember Nutting.
Thank you. Been there consulting?
I have two businesses. I have Epicenter and been there, so.
Okay. So, did I miss here, but is solid waste declining in, I mean, now, or it's expected to decline?
It is expected to decline. What I've heard from the county at the most recent Ms.WAC and SWAC meetings is tonnage is actually down in 2023 from 2022.
Okay, and that's expected to continue? I'm just, I'm somewhat skeptical, but that goes to my next question, which is, it's calculated by weight, by mass, not volume or this tonnage you said.
The county calculates the fixed annual charge based on your weight contribution. The fixed annual charge will be allocated to residents based on the size of their container.
Okay, so, have you seen a demo of the website that the county is?
I have not yet.
Okay, you kind of know where I'm going with this? I'm expecting some pushback from residents, and I'm hoping that that website is really easy to understand. You share my concern about that with tipping fees and FACs and so on. All they're going to see is like, what is the dollar? So, to whatever... So to whatever extent you interact, I would just try to make it like super easy to understand.
Absolutely.
That's it.
Councilmember Nutting, then I'll go to you. Deputy Mayor Buxton.
My only comment is that I'm just glad that we had the foresight to start negotiating this a year and a half ago as opposed to waiting until the final product came out. So that's all I have to say.
Deputy Mayor Buxton.
Thank you, Mayor. So just as a point of clarity for those listening or in the future as our residents, that it's not us deciding on this rates increase from this dais tonight, correct? Right? And I just have a note, this is not about who, it's not about picking a carrier because we've chosen Recology, it's just about how, and it's not about how much. That wasn't our decision either. It's just about how these fees are going to be collected, correct? That's the only decision that we're making tonight. Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Nutting.
To Deputy Mayor Buxton's point as well, that our other option is to decide not to pass this and reap the benefits of our year and a half of negotiations, and then go back to the table and potentially get that 50% to 60% increase because of not signing this contract tonight. So.
Yeah, I'm going to add, we faced criticism when we passed this a year and a half ago. It was too far out, it was a long, too long of a contract and so forth, but it's definitely shown that was paid off in that the foresight of the staff, we want to appreciate, recognize the staff for bringing this to our attention and encouraging us to be a driver in this, and so we paid for it. And during that time, you made us aware that this adjustment was going to come and that we were going to make it and so forth. So it's nothing new. The thing is, is Councilmember Harris is right in the fact that people are going to be upset about the price increase, but they're nowhere going to be near other cities, and that's due to the good work of good people. So thank you. All right, so we have a motion on the table. Do I have a vote? All those in favor, raise your right hand, and it passes unanimously. Okay? So next will be the adoption of the 2024 to 2029 Capital Improvement Plan, and the staff presentation will be by our finance director, Mr. Jeff Friend.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Council. Before we get to the slides, I wanted to first of all acknowledge the work Jackson Swiger did in finance, and it was his first time with this project. He was unable to be here tonight because it's his wedding anniversary, so I guess he has some other priorities. But also along with that, that I wanted to express our appreciation for, on behalf of finance, for the collaboration of Public Works and the Marina and Parks Department, because this is one of those projects where you have to work together, and we appreciated all the input and that we got from the other departments in putting this together. I also want to, before we get to the slides, kind of do an introduction to frame this for those who might be watching or members of the public in the audience here of what exactly a capital improvement plan is and why we do that, why we have one. So a capital expenditure is anything that's over, an expenditure that's over $25,000 on an asset that is, has a useful life of five years or more. And they're also included in the plan, which, so those kinds of projects that meet that criteria are in this plan, as well as some maintenance that also is $25,000 or more. What's in this plan is a list of all of the city's capital projects, the years which they begin, the funding mechanisms of which they're funded, and all of the schedule of the expenditures as well. And why do we do a capital, a plan for capital facilities? Is facilities repair and replacement, if we plan for it now, then we can fund them before, you know, if there's repairs or replacements that need to be done, those can occur before they fail, so we don't have bridges falling down and people drive over them. Also, it provides framework for decisions about community growth and development, promotes efficient government operation and enhances opportunities for outside financial assistance. So one of the funding mechanisms for a lot of projects is grants. So having a plan helps you get grant funds, means we don't have to pay for that piece, and that's always a positive thing. We like that in finance. And also, lastly, that this entire plan is in the packet tonight and also will be posted on the Finance Department webpage under Reports. The 2023 to 2028 one is currently there, and when this is, if and when this is adopted, would be posted there as well. So having said all that, take a look, get an overview of the 24 to 29 Capital Improvement Plan. Okay, so an overview, and note that this is in thousands, but that only applies to that last column, so we don't have 79,000 projects that are active. So the number of projects we have is 84, five of them ending this year, 79 active. The capital budget for the 79 is a little over $158 million, and the projects ending this year, the capital budget is about $70 million. Okay, active projects by category, so these are the different project categories. You have transportation projects, municipal capital improvements, Marina capital improvements, surface water management capital, and building facility projects. So you can see there, again, we have 84 projects for the over $158 million. So the Marina capital, you can see that's about over 17 million. A big chunk of that is the dock replacement. And let's see, next slide. Planned project cost by year, so again, you see the project categories again, but this is the expenditure spread out over the years through 2029. So this year, you'll see there's 18.5 million dollars in the capital budget. Next year, over 36 million, and then in 2025, 27.8 million. This is a funding overview. Again, this is in thousands, a list of various funding sources with the corresponding 2024 to 2029 capital budget. You'll notice the line debt proceeds, there's 27.8 million dollars. 25.1 of that, of course, is going to be the bond proceeds when we issued the bonds that were approved earlier this year. And also, grant funds at the bottom, there's also secured and unsecured grant funds. Just want to point out, unsecured grant funds would be ones that, you know, we've identified but have not officially attained as opposed to secured grant funds. And the final slide is the Capital Improvement Plan Suggested Motion. That would conclude this presentation.
Councilmember Nutting.
I move to adopt draft resolution number 23-048, approving the City of Des Moines 2024 to 2029 Capital Improvement Plan.
We have a second for Councilmember Pennington. Discussion, questions? Councilmember Harris. Do I have a second? Councilmember Harris, I mean, Councilmember Oxger has a second. All right, you have the floor to discuss it. I know you said your piece.
No, that's.
Is that it?
It's a little bit, they have the two readings of such a major, such a consequential piece of legislation.
Any other comments? Okay, I have one. First of all, this is a good solid plan. It's got the costing and funding in it. Very little's changed from last year. This allows us to fund the projects, particularly unsecured, by having this document. It's thorough, it represents a variety of neighborhoods and needs, and nothing's a surprise, so I'm not going to support your motions. So all those in favor, do you want one more response? Go ahead, second time.
Thank you. I would just say that it's not a question of supporting or not supporting, it's a question of drilling down into these a little bit. Frankly, this was the first meeting of the year of the Municipal Facilities Committee, and it just seems to me like there should be at least a certain amount of review of these projects, whether you support the funding overall or not, and that's it.
Any further discussion? Deputy Mayor Buxton.
Just a comment that several, almost all components of this have been reviewed or discussed or talked about in committee over the year.
All right. Councilmember Pennington.
Yeah, I agree with Deputy Mayor. You know, these have been on the docket for a long time, and certainly we've had ample opportunity to go through these and, you know, where they've come to council or they've come to previous budgets, and so I, you know, in regards to staff time and courtesy to staff, you know, I don't see the benefit. If there was a great benefit to go to a second reading, I would certainly support it, but I don't see the benefit at this point, so I'm satisfied with what we have right now.
All right, so we have the motion to move this to a second reading. All those in favor, raise your right hand. I see Councilmember Harris, Councilmember Oxger. All those opposed? I see Councilmember Pennington, Deputy Mayor Buxton, Councilmember Nutting and myself. Motion fails 2-4. All right, now we're back to the original motion. Is there anyone who wish discussion before we take a vote? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion to adopt draft resolution 23-048, raise your right hand. I see Councilmember Pennington, Deputy Mayor Buxton, Councilmember Nutting and myself. All those opposed? Councilmember Harris, Councilmember Oxger. Motion passes 4-2. Moving on to introduction of items for future consideration. This time is for the sole purpose of proposing new items that have not previously been before council for discussion on a future agenda. This is not a time for questions about old business. Councilmembers can submit questions or seek updates on previously discussed business to the city manager at any time. Do any councilmembers have new business they would like to propose? Seeing none, we will move on to board and committee reports, and Councilmember Oxger, we're going to start with you.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to say, obviously, I missed the last two meetings, even though I am fully vaccinated and have the booster shots and stuff, I came down with the new variant, and there's just been a vaccine that was approved last Friday, I believe. And so I would highly recommend everybody get the new booster because this is nasty stuff, and so I apologize for being away. Thank you.
Thank you. Glad you're healing. Moving on to Councilmember Nutting.
I have nothing, Mayor. I gave my committee reports earlier. Thank you.
Councilmember Harris.
First, I want to thank the city manager for his update on SCORE. I believe that when we get out in front of these things, it builds credibility, and I believe strongly in SCORE's mission, and it is a key vector towards redemption and recovery. And by being upfront, when there are challenges, any kind of incidents, it builds that credibility and faith in the mission. I wanted to mention that the Port of Seattle made much this week of declaring that they are considered a salmon-safe organization at the airport, and I wanted to give a shout out to a guy who lives in Normandy Park named Brett Fish, who more than anyone 15 years ago, 20 years ago, spent a decade of his life creating those safe waters. He just tirelessly went to court and advocated to get the port to develop a water treatment system, which they did not have going back 50 years. They had runoff going directly into Puget Sound and Des Moines Creek. Those water systems would not be safe for salmon or anyone else were it not for Brett Fish and the organizations he belonged to. And I'm just telling you that because it's easy to have a sort of revisionist history and not acknowledge past mistakes. A lot of times, positive change does not happen without somebody being cranky about things, and then time goes on and people forget, and everybody, the port will take, you know, much credit for, look at how progressive we were and everything. Yeah, well, you know something? It didn't happen without Brett Fish and 10 years of lawsuits, and which made the port spend that $110 million to process the water and make it safe for all of us. These things don't happen by themselves, and I just wanted to thank Mr. Fish wherever he is. Ironic name, but the guy's a hero of mine. Thank you.
Councilmember Pennington.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. First off, thank you, everybody, for showing up tonight and staying and speaking your piece and being heard by the council for our guests this evening. Thank you for, again, for what you do for the community and for those that are in need. And so it's just an incredible, incredible gift that you have to help those folks, so thank you for that. Finally, I would like to just acknowledge the passing of Assistant Chief Dave Lawrence last Saturday. Dave, some of you may know him, some of you may not. Dave was with the legacy King County Fire District 26, which covered the service to cities of Des Moines until we merged with Federal Way, creating South King Fire and Rescue. Dave started in 1971 and retired in 2007 as the Assistant Chief of Fleet and out of South King Fire. And Dave, you know, if you knew him, you knew him. He was a pretty, he was a character, I have to tell you. But man, he has a passion for his community. He had passion for those that were in the most need. He's, you know, during the Thanksgiving holidays, he was out delivering food and out delivering toys at Christmas, and he just had a real passion for service above self. So he was a heck of a guy, a heck of a friend, a heck of a mentor in one fashion or another, but he was a character, and he served this community for over 35 years. So that's just a shout out and acknowledgement to him. Thank you.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Buxton, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, I thoroughly enjoyed my community again last week or so, meetings, meals, events, meeting with people. I really appreciate the community here, their curiosity, their desires for information. I appreciate that. So a couple of notable items, I attended a, we call it skip, it's South King Housing and Homelessness Partners, where we pool our funds, work for supporting affordable housing and homelessness issues as a 10-city partnership. We had a presentation that was given to us by King County Housing Authority, and so just to note often, we have the King County Regional Homelessness Authority that has an R in the middle of it, and then the King County Housing Authority. And so they look similar, a lot of people get them mixed up. So I say the homeless are unhoused, and so when you see that acronym with the R in the middle, that's talking about homelessness and addressing homelessness. The other one is housing that has been in existence since 1939 in King County, working to provide affordable housing for people. So what, almost, gosh, 80 years or so. So in 2023, King County Housing Authority, they serve about 24,000 households every day. They own and operate about 12,500 affordable homes in the county. It's federally funded, along with the rents that they do collect. It's affordable, but they do collect rents, and that goes back into the housing that they do collect rents, and that goes back into the housing that they own and run. They work, the Housing Authority works to preserve affordability, and also, they're actively working for more policy and ability to create home ownership opportunities. So, that's just a little short thing on the Housing Authority. Then, I also met with the Sound Cities Association Board, and a topic of discussion was this, you might have read in the newspaper, that the King, that the King County Regional Homelessness Authority and the challenges they're having, and how they, there's a lot of funding, very few people served, and the whole organization, it's going through a reorg, they have to find a new CEO, so it's a topic of conversation in a lot of areas. They're still writing the job description and working on hiring a recruitment organization, so it's gonna be a while before they have a new CEO and they really get that all nailed down. In the meantime, it's a little topsy-turvy, but they've got some good people at the head working on these things, so we'll see what comes of that in the future. I also attended a memorial for Ezra Taylor, who was tragically shot a couple of years ago, and his mother is an amazing woman, Selena Taylor, she has turned this tragedy into positivity, and she's just refuses to dwell in anger or resentment or revenge or anything like that, she's just taken this thing on to create safety in our community. She's formed an organization, she pours back into the community, she just gives all of that sorrow back into passion to help other families and help the community to be strong and reduce gun violence, and so she has had this memorial this last week, and she's got an organization that is named after something her son was doing before he was shot and killed. It's called Keep It Easy, spelled E-Z. I'll close up here quickly. So, if you Google Keep It Easy, you can help support Selena and pour back into the community to work on creating safety. A thank you before I close, I wanted to thank our Human Services Advisory Committee, which works tirelessly to help support these organizations that we heard about tonight and other organizations in the community, and just by name, Diane Hoyer, Mary Guyberson, Corinne Ketchmark, Lynn Cashman, and our amazing staff support, Rochelle Caton. So, I appreciate these people as they give into pouring out into the community, helping support all these agencies. Thank you so much. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Yeah, as I, I attended the Ezra Taylor deal as well, and it was very touching, as always, and we had some of our police officers support it, too, and it was a nice attendance in that regard, very touching moment. Want to remind everybody, this Saturday is the last farmer's market of the year, so you want to make sure you get down there. Couple things through the week, I have a variety of things, but I'm only gonna talk about a few. I attended the Mount Rainier Girls Soccer Team, as I promised I would go, but I said I won't go unless you guarantee me a win. They beat Thomas Jefferson 2-0, and I mean, they played some great soccer, high-quality soccer, it was very impressive, and I look forward to another game. This last Saturday, Councilmember Nutting and I did the International Coastal Cleanup. We went down, we found some abandoned crab traps, we helped some other divers, somebody found a gun, several cell phones, those kind of things, but it's all an effort to make our waters clean, and so I want to thank you for joining. He actually got, bought into new gear, went out for dives, because he's been wanting to do this for years, and he was out there, and then, and it was great assistance as a deckhand to get some of the other divers that wanted to do the same thing, so my compliments to you, sir. October 14th, I will not make the run in the morning, I'm coming back for my anniversary, but we will be there that evening, and so that's just a great event, I look forward to seeing you there. Football games this week, Mount Rainier's gonna be playing at Kentwood on Friday, and Federal Way will be playing Kennedy at Federal Way, both are at 7:00 PM, and I wish our teams well. The next meeting will be October 19th, 2023, for a regular city council meeting, and do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'm moved.
Second? I got a motion from Councilmember Nutting, a second from Councilmember Pennington. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Meeting is adjourned, have a safe weekend, everybody.